This is for the Patriots. Were all the acts of violence really necessary? Like the tarring, feathering, was it really necessary in order to get written to listen?
Would you like to draw, okay, uh, we'll give you two back there. Both of you guys can answer this one.
Very good. The reason we were doing these kinds of acts is because that we were trying to fight for our liberties and our expression because the loyalists have clearly been contradicting that and that we want our own freedom.
Go ahead.
Um, I'd also like to add on that, as far as liberties and freedom, but it's also that they're not listening to us otherwise. And they're not paying enough attention to what we're saying to them. And that we need, you know, a little leniency.
Kay.
To answer your question, Ethan, by, it's the best way to, um, if, the best way to express, send out a message is through actions. If we were to silently peacefully say, use words, the king would disregard it because we are one of his many colonies that he does not care about and only uses for slavery.
Okay.
I just wanna add on.
Go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry, no, I'll let him add on.
Well, when, when we did do peaceful, when we did, you know, the, we, when we sent the peace treaty, right? You decided to tear it up and then listen to us.
My dad, I have.
Okay.
Wait, may I add to that?
Yes, I'll let you say, no, they're all answering his question, her question. Go ahead, Michael. Michael, just stand right there.
So, you guys claim that you wanted to be peaceful by sending us the olive branch petition. Yet, how do you explain the fact that you wanted this war in the first place? How do you explain the Boston massacre? Which you clearly falsified in many ways to get the other colonies to fight against us? And you also hired people to propagate things. And, not to mention Lexington, where are, where you clearly fired first.
May I have, I don't know.
Okay, I will allow, Kay, go ahead.
We let them know. I just wanna, just, with the door.
Oh, Dylan wanna talk, okay, good, Dylan.
You wanna talk about the Boston massacre? Well, I was at the Boston massacre. You redcoated. I was just peaceful, I was just protesting, man. And you redcoated, shot me, and killed me.
I am also a witness, I was a civilian there. I'm a civilian there, I'm also a civilian.
Okay, uh,
Good for you.
Well, either one of you two can respond, you guys decide.
Lucas, Lucas.
I have some questions to ask John Adams about the Boston massacre. Hello. You were in charge of, of vilifying the acts of murder against our soldiers. Is this correct?
Uh, I do not believe so.
It's true.
Just say yes.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure, you're talking about her.
No, it was John Adams, right?
Yeah, it was John.
Wasn't that me?
John Adams was like, I was Sam Adams.
I have some facts, I wanna kinda tell you.
Before you get to call us immature and childish, just get your Adams right.
I would like to.
I'm so upset.
Where is the lawyer who helped our soldiers?
Oh, I get it now.
Oh, John, okay, time out, okay, time out. I thought you were saying the guy who orchestrated.
Yeah.
No.
Okay, John Adams is the one who defen, okay.
Are you the one who cleared our soldiers' names?
Yes, I am.
Now, when you asked colonists about, um, where they were standing and their positions during the massacre, did you find that there were many inconsistencies?
Yes, I did.
And when you were asking the British about the Ba, Boston massacre, were there many inconsistencies?
Yes, I did. I don't know.
No.
Now.
I don't know. No.
Please do not interrupt me. Kay.
Sorry, Laura Frederick.
Now, when, um, the Boston massacre happened, there are reports that the person who had the mob following him did pay for his haircut and that a boy hired by Sam Adams had.
Don't say that out like that.
Hired by Sam Adams, had accused, had accused him of not.
Okay, we need to get to a point here.
Okay, I am.
Okay.
This happened across several, across several places in Boston. Now, if this happened several times and it, um, did lead to firing, but our soldiers were cleared of their names, that means that the only people guilty of starting the Boston massacre are you guys.
Okay. We, uh, go ahead.
I am Felix Holbrook.
Felix Holbrook.
Oh, I'm gonna get a question to Christmas Attics. What was your protest, what were you protesting for?
I was protesting taxes, my dog.
Okay, after this, I'm gonna, I'm gonna allow you guys to go back and forth and we'll close this thing out. Lanning, go ahead.
This is directed to the Patriots. Why did you try to convince them that like the olive branch was like bad? And you keep using it against them that they denied it when you, when you sent it, you intended for them to deny it because of war.
Axel.
How are you sure that they, um, that we wanted the war? Where do you have the proof for that?
Uh, and I do have to remind you, Mr. Hahn did not exist back in, and my lesson did not exist back in seventeen seventy-six.
I'm glad you're using time travel for that.
Okay, go ahead.
So, to bring up the topic about militias, there's some called embattled soldiers who are, who are farmers, right? Very untrained, not only were you putting, not only were you putting your own sons of liberty and other colonists lives at risk, for people who were very untrained and at the Battle of Lexington, who obviously, very nervously shot up their weapons because they didn't know what was happening. Only because you guys quote-unquote needed to have protection.
Okay, may I ask, um, you mentioned our untrained militias. That was all we could do. Did Brit, did Britain give us soldiers? Did they?
Okay. Anyone else I have not called yet here that has a question? Okay. Okay, Marcus. Marcus has a question, we are gonna ra, start getting this quick. You guys will be able to interact again. Go ahead.
Alright, so this is directed towards, uh, why would British, why would, um, the British?
Ella, hold on, time out, there's no Ella here. There's no Ella here.
Did she say Ella?
Ella. Oh, oh, you must mean Sam Adams. Oh, okay, go ahead, Sam. Go ahead, uh, Marcus, you may continue your question.
Alright, um, why would, like, the British give you soldiers?
Can you, can you repeat that question again?
Why would the British give you soldiers?
I'm not sure myself, Mar, hold on, hold on. Marcus, I'm not sure how I'm gonna address that question, so can you, say it one more time? Cause I'm not sure she can answer it, cause I'm not sure how I would answer that.
Alright, like, why would the British give you soldiers, um, when you're like trying to, when you're like fighting Britain? You know what I mean?
He was saying how, we were talking about militias, that he was saying they, they formed militias because Britain didn't give them soldiers. That's where that came from.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you answer that, can you address that?
I'm confused about the question.
Yeah, I'm confused about it too, so I can't really.
Because I, I feel like that is a better question for our general.
It's for you.
It's for our generals.
Cause someone has to repeat the question.
Okay, uh, General Green, would you like to take this question? Okay.
Um, we trained the militias in, in our, during the French and Indian War. British sent their troops in without us regarding, not asking for these troops, not, without our permission. They just sent them in, took it, won the war for us. We thank, we thanked them for that, but then as a result, took our land and left us with no defenses whatsoever and expected us to just be fine with that decision.
Okay, no, no, the question was directed towards, and it was answered. Okay, anyone else?
Wait, can I?
Now you wanna answer?
Okay.
No, not to that, it's a different topic.
Okay, we got one more from my distant learners from Ms. Kelsey Hartman. Kelsey, you may ask the question to anyone and address it to anyone.
Um, this is just to the Patriots in general, because I heard them say that they were oppressed, but the only oppression they ever talked about were taxes, so how else were they oppressed?
Okay, how else were you oppressed besides taxes? Guys. Okay, uh, listen, there's several people that can take this, I'm not gonna, you guys as a team figure that out.
After the, you know, when you guys were trying to punish us, um, it, basically they were putting soldiers in our homes uh, without, like, giving us money for them to, I don't know, help. They don't drink or anything and they take our beds and they go in our homes and it's like a police state, basically.
So yeah, that answers your question. Nope.
Okay, okay, this is what we're gonna do now. We are gonna make some final comments around a final comment. No retort. You guys are now, this is your last chance plea towards the neutrals. So, no, 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 guys, guys, I'll give you guys time, but these comments need to be somewhat quick, there is no retort. Which means if they say something, you don't get to respond, they, that's a sit. You can respond when your turn is up, but that's gonna be your comment, so. We, uh, since, since the Patriots wanna break away, let's go to the Patriots first. Who wants to start? Believe me, everyone's gonna have a chance if you, if you have a comment.
Okay, so, I gotta go back to what Peter said about, like, the slaves and stuff. Like, why would you go for them if King George himself had one point six million slaves? So, we're talking about freedom, but, so like, if you're gonna vote, why would you, and you want freedom, why would you go for them if King George himself had one point six million slaves?
Million.
Now.
Milligan slaves.
Milligan.
Your comment could be towards that or your own comment is their closing statements. So they're trying to close out why we should break away, you guys are closing out why we should not. Okay, who, uh, no, you guys choose. Everyone's gonna have a chance. Anyone have a retort to that? Okay, this is your last comment though. Okay. Okay, Michael, this is it. Why in the audience, please?
First of all, slavery is dying in our country, it's dying down. Meanwhile, it keeps growing in your country.
Okay, that's, that's fine. Uh, oh my goodness, Thomas Paine.
I'd like to address one more thing to the loyalists here. And actually, this is more towards neutrals. What we doing are alright. Get rid of the British troops, kick them out, no more tall blocks. Get rid of the tall blocks, you guys have your homes back, you have your freedom back. We get the Ohio River Valley back from the British, that'd be our land, so you guys can go out and do whatever you want in the Ohio River Valley and start your new lives and breathe. We finally got our freedom back for once in about thirty years.
Alright, go ahead, Joseph Brandt.
Okay, so, why we need to stay with Britain? We aren't the only ones in this war, it's not just the British and the colonists, it's more than that. So, the Native Americans, they were here first, they have a say in this. And the only way to be humane is to stay with Britain so that the Native Americans can get what they need to live. They need to have a place to be, or where are they gonna go? And if we stay with Britain, then they will have that place and won't kill anyone else.
Okay, go ahead.
Alright, so, I wanna address the king. Um, so, you were talking about after the war, right? You gave us taxes. And we, we got you to take away those taxes. And I would just like to add that you gave these taxes to us without us having any representation in Parliament. And then, you get, you take, we get the taxes away, right? We, when you put more taxes on us again with zero representation. If you just gave us representation in Parliament, this whole situation could've been solved. They had to be stubborn and just give us the taxes anyway.
And equalistic.
Yes.
Well, about that, you guys are a part of our country, we don't have to address you or tell you when we're giving you taxes cause you're a part of our country.
Then let us go in.
Let us be in Parliament. Why can't we be in Parliament?
Yeah, we're trying to be.
This is his last comment. Okay. Uh, go ahead, Nathaniel Green.
With us being your, part of your country, we, we have the right to be in part of Parliament. All of, all of England has a piece in a part of Parliament. And some parts of India have a person dedicated to India in Parliament. It's, everyone is in Parliament except for the colonies.
Okay, we are gonna have to, okay, go ahead.
My last one commented.
You've already commented, haven't you? In the final, okay.
Yes, I was the one who commented. So, during the writing of the Declaration of Independence, one of the things was that you would get rid of slavery. But, because mo, many of your colonies had slaves themselves, you guys, either they would drop out and you guys wouldn't be able to have a thirteen zero vote, or if they were allowed to keep their slaves, they would go along with what you guys wanted. So, when you guys are coming at King George for having his own slaves, you guys also have your own slaves.
One point six million.
That's why we were trying to break away, so we can form our new nation that has freedom for everybody.
And we can, like, see, he's an original.
We also need everyone in our colonies to agree just to break off, but we can work on that. And, um, just in a good thing, it will still work in our country. We need to.
One at a time, guys.
Have everyone included, and whether that's terrible or not, which we still need, like, we need everyone to agree on that.
We will deliberate to the vote in three minutes. Okay. But, no, you can't talk again, once you've talked, go ahead. Wait, I don't care, whoever, whoever.
I'd like to notify on what you said, uh, Mr., um, uh, well, as, as you were saying about slaves and all that, um, you said that we had one place, you guys had more than that in all your colonies. In Georgia, Virginia, doing farm work and something like that, so you guys. And, for during the war, you're letting our, you're gonna let our slaves go and fought for us. And they did, you guys never did that for you guys, for your slaves, you guys kept them trapped and in your own will. We let them fight for us to get their freedom back, and we don't advise them. That's correct, we actually, uh, have the same law as, uh, Britain did to let the slaves be, they fought for us, so that's incorrect.
Sam Adams?
Um. Wait, no, 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 I'm still going, I just feel awkward standing up.
Okay.
Okay, actually, no, I am. So, this, this has nothing to do with what we were talking about before, but.
Really fast, Sam.
May I ask you a question? Did you mention that the taxes were to help you after the French and Indian War? Can you respond to that?
Yes, you may.
Um, you mentioned that they were to help you and that you needed our taxes to help you after the French and Indian War, right?
Yes.
So then why in your amazing rap did you mention that you were making money from the taxes?
Well, in the sense that we were making money to pay off our debts. The debt that we caused by the, that was caused by you guys.
Now, was that a line in your rap? It said that we were making money off of our taxes, so it. Follow the rap.
Okay, that is the end of that comment?
I'd like to read that.
You guys have already talked, I mean, you have already, yeah, go ahead. We have, like, a minute and a half left.
We had six to solve it, you know?
Hold on, time out, time out. You guys have spoke, it's your turn. Go ahead, King.
King already talked.
So, if you guys wanna go join the Patriots and go to the Ohio Valley, you guys can. But you guys are, you're just gonna get killed by Chief Pineak and his pack, and when you guys come back to the war.
He's dead, bro.
He's dead.
He's six feet long. Period, trying to pass me through. That's the one with one point six million slaves.
Okay, go ahead.
Excuse me. Order. I'm turning on my break, I'm gonna. Go ahead. Turn it off. I'd like to say, a long time ago, England used to be, used to be, used, England used to be in Rome. No, yes it was.
John Adams, we're running short on time.
Later on, it became a country, and it was, it became a country by making its own decisions, coming together, and learning from their mistakes. That's how, what I hope for this country will be taught. It will be land for equal people and rights.
Thank you very much.
Okay, all I wanna say to the neutrals is, is that a real, I definitely wanna leave and all, but a real patriot would've stayed with their country and wouldn't have been immature or been dazed or been, you know, be bad.
Please.
Okay, one final word over here to convince the neutrals. One final word over here.
Can they rebuttal to us?
No. And it's like twenty seconds. Make sure you are, you start getting your arguments for your vote. Mister and Misses, uh, loyalists. Loyalists, make sure you are, this is the last chance, they can, they can sway your vote. Okay, since, since the Patriots want to break away, this final word is going to be from whom?
Christmas Attics.
Christmas Attics, okay. Quiet in the audience, please.
I died for the revolution.
No, wait, finish it, finish it.
Ghost, goes that, my thirteen colonies could be free.
It was the king.
Shh. Are we done, Christmas Attics? Thank you, Christmas Attics.
Talking from the grave.
Last comment, loyalists.
Okay, you guys have been acting like children. We have given you assemblies, the right to make our own taxes, and many rights that people in England don't have. And you still fight us to get more rights that, you already have many rights that British people who live in England don't have. You have your, you've had your own assemblies, and you talk about these taxes, but you don't go to the backstory. They were a lot more, and we lowered them more and more, like, you, you guys, and you still fight us.
Okay. Uh, neutrals, I want you to take thirty seconds to a minute to kind of formulate your final opinion and your vote. Don't say anything, but no, 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 you guys aren't agreeing, you were just on your own, you're not doing this group vote. You're just kinda like, alright, cause we're gonna do our tally over there, and if Molly Brandt wants to keep score, that would be great.
Then I can't be black.
Now that, now that gets a bigger verse.
Okay, so, I want, neutrals, I want votes and a couple of sentences of why you went. And you can cite different, uh, certain events at this. As of course, that same thing with you guys at home. So, I think we should start at home. Aditya.
Okay, so, I'm going to be going with the Patriot side because, um, uh, as they said, um, they did try making peace using the olive branch petition, but the king threw it away as a, um, result of the Second Continental Congress, but the Patriots did not have any other way, um, to communicate with each other since their assemblies were banned because of the intolerable acts, so I'm going to.
Just the Boston Assembly was. Just the Boston Assembly was. Okay. Alex.
I'm going with the loyalists mainly because their points, they all agreed on the same thing. They didn't contradict each other, unlike where the Patriots sometimes, mainly talking about the Boston Tea Party, they said different things, they said that they needed the tea, they said that they didn't, they said it was an act of, uh, how do you say, uh, it was a message and other stuff, uh, so yeah.
Okay. We now go to Kelsey.
Uh, I'm gonna go with the Patriots on this one because I just feel like, um, the, for.
Kelsey, Kelsey, you just lost like three or four friends.
Yes, you did, you definitely did.
Just kidding, go on.
Well, arguments, to me, it just seems like it's just the ego getting in the way for the, um, loyalists because they should, I feel like they should just let the Patriots be, they don't really have a solid reason to keep them.
Okay. Two, one, Patriots, let's go to Caleb.
Alright, I believe, um, I sided with the loyalists, um, cause I believe that, uh, what the Patriots have been doing, uh, with tarring and feathering is a nasty way to solve problems. Um, and just by breaking things is not a good way to decide on things.
Okay. We shall go to Marcus.
Um, I'm gonna have to go with the loyalists because they had, um, they had, um, a lot of good points, and also when the Patriots, um, argued back, they had better comebacks, um, the loyalists, when, um, the Patriots argued, in my opinion.
Alright, it is three to two. We now go to Eugene.
So, it was a close battle for me. The arguments on both sides were great, but in the end, I trust the loyalists.
Yeah.
So, it's because they had a lot of great points, in my opinion, and, like, the taxing, I heard Lucas say an amazing point, that they only were taxed, the Patriots were only taxed four percent. In Britain, they were taxed thirty-three, and for me, that just, like, was a very good reason. And also, the, this wouldn't have happened without the Patriots starting the French and Indian War. So, yeah, I'm going to the loyalists.
Okay, let's go to Cooper.
Um, I'm probably going to go to the loyalists because the Patriots basically started the war, actually, like, because like, it's kinda fun because like when they started it, it's like it, it gave them a reason to start over, but then they, then they started complaining about the tax when the Great Britain had it a lot higher, and then, yeah, that's pretty much it, so basically, that's all.
Alright, that's good. Mister Arnov.
So, I'm siding with the Patriots because, um, I feel like they had like a better point on many things and also because they were promised like a better life. Yet, the British like, kinda like took over their land, I guess, so I'm kinda gonna be sided, siding with the Patriots.
Alright. I think that's the end, is there anyone else at the, at home that I didn't call? Parker. No, I called him, Marcus, Marcus. Parker.
So, I'm siding with the loyalists because, um, I feel like they provided a bunch of great facts and a balanced amount of passion, and, um, I kinda. And, um, I kinda agree with what Alex said about the Boston Tea Party and how about, um, the Patriots having mixed opinions. So, um, and the song was "The Cherry on Top".
Alright. Very good. Alicia.
Uh, I'm gonna be siding with the loyalists as well. Because as Alex said, they were all agreeing with each other and they were also using facts with the thirty-three percent and four percent on tax where they are. And they also said how the Patriots spilled the tea into the, spilled the tea when they were also saying that they needed the tea. Which I don't think was very like logical for them, but on the Patriot side. And, um, they are, and the Patriots are also, um, having riots against the, um. The stump, and I don't think that's very good on their part, so yeah, I'm siding with the loyalists.
Okay, we now, is there anyone at home I forgot? No, we got Alex. Got Alicia. Okay, let's go to our live, we shall go to the Earl of Effingham.
So, I'm gonna, I think I'm gonna have to side with the Patriots because, um. Okay, so, I'm gonna have to side with the Patriots because, like, they, um. I chose them because they wanted to have freedom for all people, including like all the slaves that we have, so everybody's treated equal. And I also chose them because like all the people from England invaded us for no reason. And they took our land and they fought us for it, so.
Alright, Earl. James Allen. What? The Patriot, Hukam. Alright. Richard Henderson.
Um, I'm gonna have to go with the loyalists because I feel like, with every argument they had, they had a perfect argument to it. Also, their songs cover it a lot of places. And, um, also, I agree with them about how they only got four percent in taxes and they got thirty-three and unfair.
Okay. Peter Bestis.
I'm gonna go through the loyalists cause I feel like they gave them a lot. And then they passed them to, so they can get reinsurance for all they've given them, and then they can apply against the.
Guys, let them talk, please. No, excuse me, they sat there and listened to everything you said. Let them talk, please. Go ahead.
So, when they gave them everything, they just kinda fought back against it. When they still got taxed the last time.
Nick.
So, I'm gonna be going for the loyalist. Guys, first, they have a better army, which means they can actually protect us. Although, US, the colonies, they're still like making their army. And they have, they have more taxes, so they're still working on theirs. Although, colonies, they are, they have like a small tax, so they're not learning as much as the British are.
Alright, I'm gonna turn this off. Oh, Pedro, I thought Pedro went. I'm sorry, Pedro. Uh, never mind, we're just gonna turn it off anyway. Just kidding. Go ahead, Pedro.
Uh, I'm going for the Patriots. I would like to live in a country that would listen to what I have to say, and I would like to be free. And I'll have a stubborn king and tax us.
Okay, so, I'm gonna turn this off. And remember, this is gonna be on two parts on, remember, this is gonna be the private YouTube to you guys. You get the code.